Hey folks, good evening. Earl Campbell here for me to show undercover. And today was the Wycom County Council meeting. We were at the government office building. And a lot took place, a lot happened, a lot of stuff was said today. As promised, I wanted to come on here and give everybody an update on what happened, what all was, what all took place and what's next? So to start off, a bunch of little proclamations, a couple of public hearings took place. We're gonna jump down, we're gonna jump all through the council's agenda to the important part, and that is the Resolution 70 2024. And that's to amend the charter for coming county to transition to a county manager from government. Beginning on December 1st, 2026. So that's basically the, the, the goal is to get rid of the county executive position or put it on the ballot for the people to vote on. So what we've been talking about in the most recent videos. Going over that time to time again, we've all heard it, we knew it was gonna happen today, we knew how it was gonna go. As expected, county council voted and they're gonna put the question on the ballot. I'm not really concerned about it. Very confident that the public will show up and show support. Nothing more than just common sense. I mean, if you, if you watch any of these council meetings, the, the power tripping that comes along with it is, is pretty abundant and obvious. You know, the county council is just not happy that there's somebody there that, you know, gives them a little bit of run for their money. You know, we, I said it time and time again, this is all personnel issue, it's, it's, um, the county council doesn't like not having the full power, that's just the bottom line. So let's take a look at each, each county council member and what they had to say and, uh, before we do something dawned on me while we were sitting in the council meeting today. You know, they, they say this isn't personal towards county executive Julie Giordano. However, they're trying to change over to a, the way they explained Mr. Mr. Uh, Cannon explaining Mr. Josh Hastings. Several people went into it that it's, it's gonna be a county management form, so they would hire somebody to basically do the same job that Julie Giordano was doing. The only difference is they'd be in control. So when, when right now, they can tell Julie Giordano, you know, X, Y, Z, and Julie Giordano can tell him, you know, stick it up your ass, I'm not doing that. And then they have to go back and forth and, you know, it's, 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 um, it's negotiations that take place, but it's just, it's, it's a constant of the butting of the heads. And I, I think that's why they're doing this, you know, they can say whatever they want, that it's not personal, I think anybody that watches will tell you that it is, we'll get into more of that in a little bit. But first to speak was Mr. Josh Hastings, uh, Councilman Josh Hastings. And I gotta say, you know, I said it a couple of weeks ago, um, on a, on a video that we made, I said, you know, I, I really do think that he has good intent, I think he has, and he's a very smart man, I think he, he's, he's good for Wycom County. And I commend him for being able to stand out, he voted against putting this on the ballot. And he had his reasons, um, and while I'm not gonna agree with everything, you know, I do, I do appreciate the fact that while everybody else was there and, you know, with the exception of Mr. James Winn, James Winn and Josh Hastings were the two that said, we're not voting for this. Um, and they voted against it. And that was, it had to be difficult for Mr. Josh, uh, for Mr. Hastings. You know, basically as he went against the others on the council that basically they stick together as a, as one joint group per se. I, I disagree with what he said about, um, the criteria to lead the county. Mr. Hastings had said that, you know, he believes that there should be criteria for what you should be, um, held to when you're trying to run for county executive. And I just disagree with that, I think that if I wanna run for county executive, if I have enough people supporting me, that means that the community wants me to run the county. Right now, the community voted Julie Giordano, she is the county executive. You know, I, I look at county executive and, you know, I don't know what her complete background is. I know today she said that she has a masters, and I think she said she had thirty plus extra credits. Pretty intelligent to me, a lot of education. But that being said, what is the, what is the, the criteria and what is the conditions to become a county executive? You know, is the county council gonna make those, those limitations, are they gonna say, well, you know, you have to have a, a masters in communications, you have to have a masters and, and, you know, running a government, you have to sit on the council for X amount of years, you know, I just don't think that's the, that's the right way to go. I'll say this, and anybody that's worked in a police department or anywhere in, in government will tell you that sometimes the smartest people aren't the ones with the college education. So by, by limiting your, your parameters to just people that had the higher, high ranking, you know, master's degree in certain categories, I think you're really cutting the, cutting yourself short. He brought up another, a, a valid point that, you know, how does it look on Wycom County? If we go to the form of, of, you know, the executive form of government, and now we're gonna go back. It just, it's not a good image on us, um, I don't agree with it, I don't think it's right. Mr. Hot, Mr. Uh, Hastings also said the same thing, he said, you know, I, I, I wonder what that makes, what's that look on us? And I just don't think it's a good look. So moving on. Next up was Mr. Joe Holloway and, you know, he referred to a hundred and thirty-nine years, um, then he referred to since eighteen sixty-seven. And, you know, he kept referring to the past and the past, and you go back to the way, well, you know, a lot of things have changed since eighteen sixty-seven. I don't know about you guys, but I don't wanna live in the same era as eighteen sixty-seven. We have grown, we've moved on, and the county voters have said, we want the executive form of government. Took a vote, won, now we're there. He keeps saying, let's go back to it, let's go back to it. Again, you can't, you can't say how we should, the, the county should be run today the way it was a hundred and thirty-nine years ago, it's just ridiculous to even say, so. Uh, next was Mr. Jeff Merritt and, you know, I, I, I just have one thing to say about Mr. Merritt, and he keeps hanging his hat on this, um, the fact that forty percent of the voters that voted for this, you know, are, are different now than they were back then. And, and I, I just can't wrap my head around this, especially for somebody like Mr. Merritt. If we move, if I move my family tomorrow and I move to, let's say Texas. Well, Texas doesn't change their rules because, you know, Earl Campbell and, you know, five thousand people moved there. You are moving to their state, you adjust to their rules. And, and that's what Mr. Merritt keeps, you know, hanging his hat on or using as an excuse, I mean, I don't know what it is, but, you know, people move to Wycom County, they have to understand, this is the government that we have. We have a county executive, we have a county council, and it's checks and balances, and it's, it's a balancing act. If people don't agree with that, move to Worcester County, there's no county executive in Worcester County. If you don't like that, move to Somerside County. You do not have to move here to Wycom County if you don't agree with the rules. And I think that's what's happening in society, we're, we're changing the rules and we're changing what is happening around us in our communities to fit people where it shouldn't be like that, the people need to fit for the county and the rules that are there, no different than the United States, if you move to our country, you go by our rules. You know, if we have a crisis at the border, you know, all these people that are coming across the border right now, are we gonna change our rules because they're living here now? The answer is no, it's common sense. So why are we even considering that and using that as an excuse here in Wycom County? So next up was, um, Miss Shani Shields. And I tell you, you know, I've been very vocal about Miss Shani, saying that I like her and she's a very nice lady and, and I still think that's somewhat true, but I have lost a little bit of respect for Miss Shani. You know, she, she sits up there and she claims that she can get along with anybody, she can talk to anybody, and communication is a big thing. Well, I've emailed her three times in the last week, or, I'm sorry, the last two weeks, and I haven't got one response, not one. So, she goes on, you know, she, she basically supports putting it on the ballot and letting the people vote. And she says she'll be okay with it, whatever way it goes, uh, for or against. It's what the people want. But didn't the people already vote? So it confuses me. The people already said that what they wanted, the people said they wanted this formal government. So now we're going back on it again, it just doesn't make any sense, not at all. So next was Shane Baker. Of course, he says he's putting it on the ballot. He says that, you know, let the people vote for it, and he is fine with it either way. But again, didn't we already do this? So we did it a couple of years ago, now we're gonna vote for it again here in, in the next coming months. And then what happens if, if, if they vote to keep the executive position? We're gonna go through this again another four years, and then another eight years? Like, when does it end, when do we draw the line and say, the people have voted, the, the people have spoken, this is what the people want? Uh, moving on. Next was Mr. John Cannon. He claims that it isn't a personal issue, but I will encourage you all, do, do just do yourself a favor tomorrow when you're on your lunch breaks, or you're sitting around your computers and you're sitting at your desk, you know, go to PAC 14. You know, shout out Mr. Tom and Jennifer. Go to PAC 14, they do a wonderful job and they have a YouTube page, and search these recent meetings. And listen to what he's saying. Listen to the words that come out of his mouth. A lot can be said by just, just watching this video, just watch his videos and listen to what he says, how he says it. In, in, in today's council meeting, and you can go listen to this, he stays that the county is stuck with what they get for a four-year term. So, you know, he, he says we're stuck with it, but I'm a little confused, who's stuck with it? Because that's what the people want. The people voted for the county executive position, the people voted for Julie Giordano. So what are we stuck with? I think that the fact of the matter is, he's saying that the county council is jammed up for four years because they're not gonna get away with what they've got away with in years past and, you know. That's what, that we're ignoring the fact that the people voted for this. People have voted and said, this is what we want, she's the person we want to run this county. Mr. Cannon even went in and said, this could be an awfully long time. And then I'm gonna refer you guys to, to a, a little statement that he made, and it's at thirty-three minutes and fifty seconds of the video. And he says, "Council can't control that. If the council was, if the council was a body of seven, only the council would have complete control." Which I also think is very, very important. Not very important, very, very important. So basically there he's saying, you know, we want the power, we don't want somebody separating us from telling us what we can and can't do. Sorry, it's an elected official, it's an elected position, and we're gonna fight for it. So basically it goes on the ballot now. We're gonna dig her, dig her claws in, we're gonna roll up our sleeves and we're gonna go to bat, we're gonna get the, get this all, uh, put in the back burner. You know, I, 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 I'm wholeheartedly believe, I was sitting next to somebody today and I was talking as I was walking out to this, to another person. And they said, you know, what do you think will happen, and I said, well, I think it's gonna be overwhelming about support in favor of keeping the executive position. Doesn't mean you're keeping Julie Giordano, means you're keeping the executive position. If you don't agree with what Julie Giordano does, and you vote her out in two years, four years, however long it is, but you don't get rid of the position and go backwards in time because you can't get along with one individual. That makes no sense at all, it just makes none. So, moving on, like I said, we're, we're past that. We're gonna, we're gonna be fine, county executive position's gonna be fine, not too much worried about that. Next they had the, uh, the conversations about the trash and, just to give you guys a little bit of a background, so on Friday, my wife and I come home, we went down to the, uh, the Dutch market. We came home, there was a ton of messages, a ton. You guys have all heard me say, if I don't know something, I don't talk about it, I don't speak on it, I don't give my opinion. There was a major issue with, with the landfill, the trash issues. We had the, the, the people who were at Seagull, um, sent us a message, really, really nice message, he laid it out really good. Really nice people too, by the way, I got to talk to him today, talked to him again online, um, super, super nice people. And, you know, there was a lot of, basically, lack of communication, I guess, was the best way to put it, and county executive Julie Giordano, she spoke up and she said, you know, this, this was a mistake on everybody's part, I think everybody shares the, the mistake, and she, she admitted her mistake and, I think everyone else there, with the exception of Mr. Joe Holloway, you know, he, he cried like a little crybaby, um, said, thanks for blaming it on me, whatever. Um, I commend her for, for taking it on, on the chin and saying, hey, look, you know, I'm partially responsible for this, I think the council's partially responsible for this. I think what she was trying to get across in the communications was, you know, they had to, they did all the steps, they did the, the council, they did all the readings, they, they went by what they needed to do, it went to the budget, the whole nine yards. And, you know, it was made out that, you know, county executive could have communicated a little bit better with the, with the local municipalities. And, and she was right, she threw it back and she said, you know, well, each one of you have a, a, a area that you control, you're just as responsible. So, and I agree with what she said, um, but neither here nor there, it was great to see, it was a lot of communication that was going on, and I'd say probably half an hour. The council, they were talking, various people were talking, county executive, Pam Olin got on, she was on Zoom, she's probably on some island and enjoying her vacation, hi, Miss Pam, I hope you're enjoying yourself. Um, she said she was gonna put the, put her picture up on the screen, but she didn't because she was on the beaches somewhere, I know it. But anyway, you know, it really went well because it was the way government is supposed to work, and the way this form of government is supposed to work. And they both go back and forth, but they had some input from the community, you know, the, the fine folks from Seagull. I think his name was Andrew or Andy, you know, he got up there and spoke, spoke very well, very intelligent, he, he, he's very educated on the topic. And it all worked itself out, they came to a somewhat of an agreement. Excuse me. The fact of the matter is, we're running out of space for the, for the landfill, so something has to be done. There was some negotiation or some conversation about, you know, how much trash is being dumped from outside the county. But in the end, I think everyone was, was, was happy with the, the final result. There's gonna be some cost, there's gonna be some price increases, that's just gonna happen, there's just no way around that. But I think it made a little people more happy is the fact that pushed it off a little bit, so that it doesn't take immediate effect where it gives them time to prepare and plan, you know, give people notice, hey, look, your trash rates are, are gonna go up, and here's why. So, that was, uh, was very good to see, I commend both sides, uh, the county council and the county executive for the work they put in on this over the weekend. So, moving on, next was, um, Legislative Bill 2024 oh six. And this is a Joe Holloway, um, bill. Basically, it's just taking the, uh, taking the ability for the county executive to do events. Like the safari at the quarry. Uh, which is just crazy to me, you know, if you can't agree with it, you just change the law. Like, that in itself is absurd, it, it is, it shows you the corruption that is within our government. That if I don't like the way it goes, I'll just change the law. If I don't like the way something's working, I'll just change the, the law so that it benefits me. So then we get to the public comments, and you guys have watched the public comments. You know, a lot of people get up there and they say, say some, uh, things and this, this Joe Venoso, Venoso, or however you say his name, apparently he likes the, the vowels being said in it. You know, he gets up there each week and he runs his mouth, and he's able to say whatever he wants. And it's, it's the most amazing thing to me because John Cannon don't say anything. Like, if I didn't know anything, if I didn't know any better, I would think like, you know, he's like a, a pawn in the game. John Cannon lets him say whatever he wants, lets him even call out council members, which isn't allowed to other people. He took shots at me, and that's okay, that's fine, I care less what that guy thinks. Here's what I don't understand. So, Mr. Hastings, who represents Salisbury, Mr. Venoso is upset with him and literally calls him out on his actions. Calls him out in a public forum. Now, we can go back and listen, I can present the video right on PAC 14. Many times, when they're told, you can't, you can't do that, you can't call out a council member by their name and you can't direct it to the council. What did he do today? But it was allowed, why? Because much like Julie Giordano, Mr. Hastings went against John Cannon in his vote. So of course, you can go up there and call him anything you want. Which is ridiculous, really is, totally unprofessional, shouldn't have been done, again, you know, Mr. Hastings, and I, I wanna say something too. I apologize, when I was in public comments today, I had, didn't realize this until I got home, my wife and kids told me. I apparently said, I commend Mr. Holloway, I meant to say, I commend Mr. Hastings. Because it takes a lot to get up there, look, I couldn't run for public office, I wouldn't wanna sit up there and do their jobs, none of them. You know, I may not agree with Mr. Cannon, I may not agree with Mr. Merritt, um, may not agree with Miss Shani, uh, definitely don't agree with Shane Baker. But I, I do respect the fact that they, they put themselves out there, um, and at some point, thought they were gonna do good. So, all those guys, men and women, I, I, I respect it and I appreciate what they do, um, I just wish it was run differently. So a few other people commented, and then I had my opportunity. So I said a few things, I commended the council and the executive office for working together today. And I think that everybody in that gallery agreed, that's how a government is supposed to work, that's how it's supposed to run. Supposed to be negotiations, communications, community input, and coming to an agreement. I then commended Mr. Josh Hastings, I said, you know, I thanked him for, for what he, uh, having the, the backbone of staying up against the rest. And then I gave the floor to Mr. Baker. You know, a couple of weeks back, Mr. Baker kept saying, I hope you're gonna be at the council meeting because I've got something that I wanna share and, you know, I hope you're gonna be there, I hope you're gonna be there, insinuating that I was, uh, made some mistakes with my freedom of information FOIA. And when I did that, it was like the lights went off. Mr. Cannon said, it isn't a back and forth, and it's only for the public to state their concerns. To which I said, well, you know, I was just coming here, and I honestly didn't have any intentions of speaking today, I was just going there to, for Mr. Mr. Baker. But either here or there, I was done, I didn't have anything, but I had a minute and a half, so I figured, you know, what the hell, might as well get a little bit more out. So I brought up the fact that multiple council members had expressed the interest in running for the county executive position. However, they didn't get the position for whatever reason, whether they didn't run, or they didn't get elected, or whatever reason, they just never, never followed through with it. But at one point, they expressed interest, hey, I'm interested in that position. To which Mr. Cannon said, no one was interested. He said, no one was, no one was interested in that appointment, and that's just a lie. Here's the facts, you're entitled to your opinion, but that doesn't change the facts. Mr. Cannon said if he was interested, he would have ran, so I'm gonna let you listen to this. Pay close attention to what's happening, listen to his words. This is an interview with Mr. Greg Basset.
What about yourself, there's rumors that you might wanna be county executive?
Uh, well, I'm definitely running, I'm definitely running.
Mr. Basset asked, there's rumor that you're gonna run for county executive? And his response, I'm definitely running, I'm definitely running, let me let you hear it again, one more time.
For another four years.
What about yourself, there's rumors that you might wanna be county executive?
Uh, well, I'm definitely running, I'm definitely running.
Again, you're entitled to your opinion, but you're not able to change the facts. And the facts are, you expressed your interest in running for county executive. Now, you didn't get that position, and now you wanna get rid of it. Make it make sense. Make it make sense. And then I explained that Mr. Holloway entered his name to be the executive. To which, he lost it, completely. Called me a liar, which I could care less. Here, here's the reality, I don't care about the background and backstory, the fact is, he said, I'm interested in running for county executive. I don't care what the reason was, I don't care if there was no one else available, I don't care if there was four people and the county executive said, we need to put somebody in there. He expressed his interest in running for the county executive position. He didn't get that position because an attorney found a loophole and said, no, 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 you can't do that. So, you can, uh, point your finger at anybody you want and you can, you can come out with your outlandish, you know, anger. That's fine. But I'm still gonna be here to remind you when you screw up, and you screwed up, because you did wanna run for this county executive. There's several articles out there, there's even a county, I'll put it in the end here, where his name was put on the, the, um, interest form, and it was scratched out because they found out that he couldn't run. So don't say that you weren't interested or you, you weren't gonna run for a county executive. So you at least have Mr. John Cannon and you have Mr. Joe Holloway that have expressed interest in that position. But now, they didn't get that position, and they wanna get rid of it. So basically, it's, you know, it's, it's a play on words. Well, I, I didn't wanna run, but I would have run, or, you know, Mr. Cannon saying, you know, I'm gonna run. Whatever reason, he didn't run, I, I, look. Whatever. But here's what I found the most ironic about the whole conversation today, today. You know, Mr. Cannon interrupted when I was calling out Mr. Baker and said, hey, Mr. Baker, you know, here's your chance, you can confront me, you know, about the, the FOIA. Mr. Mr. Cannon said, you know, that's not what this is, we don't go back and forth, we're not gonna do this. But then as soon as it was turned around on him and Mr. Holloway, well, then they wanna, they wanna go at it and they wanna, you know, defend themselves. Well, how come Mr. Baker couldn't defend himself? How come Mr. Baker wasn't allowed to speak his mind? And, and talk to me, but Mr. Cannon can, and Mr. Holloway can, Mr. Holloway got up there and called me a liar. Which, anybody who wants to go on Google, I'll beg you, Joe Holloway for Wycom County Executive, go look it up. Again, you can't change that, these videos don't go away, Google ain't going nowhere. Lies catch up with you. So, you know, all throughout the thing, you know, going back to Mr. Baker. You know, he said he was gonna, he had something that he wanted to discuss when I was there, I show up, nothing, crickets, nothing at all. Everybody has, you know, they wanna, they wanna get on emails and, and throw out, well, I hope you show up because we're gonna do this and this and this. But then people get there and it's like crickets. And just sickening. So then, you know, our county executive Julie Giordano gets up there and she speaks, and I, I could tell you everything she said, but I would just encourage you to go online and listen for yourself. Listen to her words, listen to what she says, look at the emotion of her. Listen to her words, listen to what she says, look at the emotion of her. Listen to her voice, listen to her words and look at her while she's talking. She, she's, she's taken this pretty hard that, you know, this is what's right and she's fighting for what's right. And I, I have so much respect for her because of this, because, you know, she's putting up a lot. You know, she put out a, I don't know if I have it here, I do. She put out a little thing at, during the thing and I brought it home and I read it and I tell you, I'm, I'm not going to post this, I'm going to get her permission to post it first. But I'll, I'll put all this stuff on here that she come up with and it's amazing. It is truly amazing. But here's what's even more. So if you listen in the background, when she gets to her three minute mark. You'll hear John Cannon say, time's up, or whatever he is, hits his little, you know, you, you gotta wrap it up. And it's the most craziest thing to me. I just cannot wrap my head around this. And someone tell me if I'm wrong. She is the county executive. She is the most powerful woman in Wycomico County. To citizens, she's the third most powerful woman or third most powerful individual, I should say, in the state of Maryland for Wycomico County. You have the governor, you have the assistant governor, then you have the county executive. And during Shane Baker's comments again today, you'll see, he crucifies her for not being in during the meeting. He says she should have to be able to sit here and, 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 you know, listen to everything that's said. But when she talks, she gets three minutes. That's it. Three minutes. And even today, I beg you, go listen to the county when she's done talking and you'll hear John Cannon say, you are no different than any other citizen at this podium. Really? Really? Because the last time I checked, she was running this county. And the last time I checked, she's in charge of Wycomico County. And you may not like that, and it probably angers you, probably gets your face real red, and that's okay. But facts are facts. And you give her three minutes, three minutes. When she, when she gets to three minutes, cut it off. That's it. So then we go into council comments. And again, you know, Shane goes off on his little tangent about, you know, she's not there and, you know, he reflects from a couple of weeks ago and there's, there's, there's no time limit, there's no interruption. County council can say whatever they want, they can run one for five minutes, six minutes, ten minutes, nothing is said. Julie gets up there, three minutes, and then done. It's kind of like, you know, she, she's the, she's the redheaded stepchild of the family. And, you know, you, you get away. That's, that's how it is, that's how they treat her. So I, I'll, I'll ask you guys this. You try to explain, you try to defend yourself in just three minutes of anything, I don't care what it is, pick a topic. You know, you go to the store and your wife finds a candy wrapper underneath your seat. Try to explain that and defend yourself in just three minutes. See if you can do it. This lady is running the county, the entire county. And she's not given the respect to be able to say what she wants. But then you had the county council who criticized her for not being in there. So what is she supposed to do? She's supposed to attend the account, sit in a seat, listen to everybody, bitch moan, groan, complain. And then when you get time to defend yourself, you only get three minutes. But mind you, anybody else on the county council, get up there and ramble, talk whatever they want. And it's, we, look, we've all known this and this isn't anything against the people from Shadow Hills. But there are several people from Shadow Hills that have gotten up there and talked for four or five minutes, nothing was said. Make it make sense. So then, Mr. Holloway spoke. And I will say, he, he, he apologized, um, and I appreciate that, but it's not necessary. We're all adults, I'm thick skin. We can disagree and, and still want what's best for the county. I disagree with, with all the way it's worded. You know, th- this, it, it, the whole thing is a play on words. He can say whatever he wants, he expresses interest in running for the county executive position. He didn't get it for whatever reason, and now he wants to get rid of it. So. Once again, I, I, you know, I want to wrap this up. I know this is a pretty long video. I encourage you all to watch these meetings. If you can't do it all at one time, I know they're kind of long, like today, I mean, today was, you know, at least two hours. But skim through them, most of the times, you know, you can just skip through them, get through the stuff you're not really interested in. If you're not interested in the trash stuff, skip past it. If you're not interested in hearing a public comment, don't listen to it. But, but pay attention to some things and, and just listen to little bits and pieces here and there. So you, so you're educated on what goes on. Look, I don't put stuff on here without putting my evidence behind it. You know, I tell you where to find stuff, I'm going to speak the truth. You're going to go on PAC fourteen, wonderful people over there, they do a great work. Um, they got this video out really, really early today, which was awesome. So everybody can listen to it, you know, tonight, you're laying in your bed, you get ready to go to bed, turn on for twenty minutes, thirty minutes, listen to it. Speed, you know, flip through it. I'm always going to do that, I'm always going to put the evidence for my claims in my posts. I don't want anybody to say, you know, what we heard many, many times today. And nobody actually called me out by name, but you know, everybody likes to say it's a gossip column and that's fine. But you know what happens with gossip? People start talking. I learned that on Bridgerton. And I thank my wife for that. My wife is behind the scenes here recording me and she's got a big old smile on her face, so I'll throw out her little Bridgerton. We finished up the season, by the way, anyway. When you're gossiping, you're talking. When you're talking, you're communicating and that's what's important. And that's why Easter Shorner Cover is so powerful. Put stuff out there and give people a voice. We give people a, a chance to know what's right, what's wrong and not hide the facts. Without Easter Shorner Cover, half the stuff probably wouldn't even make it out there. Everybody likes, you sit there and you listen to the council and even Ms. Shanie, you know, Ms. Shanie keeps bringing it up now about social media and she said today, she told Julie Giordano, you know, you need to stop using social media. Well, Julie's friends of probably half of Wycomico County on her page. So go on her page and find something negative. Is it Julie that's being negative? Or is it Earl Campbell? I ask you, please, check it. You know, she ha, she has things that she has to sort of not post. Um, I don't, I don't answer to anybody except my wife and my kids and that's it. So I could post anything I want and I'm going to continue to post what I want, all the way up until that vote, all the way up until that election. I work too hard to provide a service for this community, the entire community. And I just truthfully don't care what this council thinks of me personally. Don't care what they think of my page. I don't care if they like my page. Here's what I'll tell you. They all follow it. So they must be interested in it. But anyway. Look, I, oh, one more thing, one more thing, one more thing. You know, today, while we were there, Ms. McKell, I don't want to start anything wrong and I'm not saying this wrong if I do it, it's Ms. McKell, Dalem, Dalem. You know, for the first time, we kind of like, I felt like we could like, subliminally were communicating, she kept looking at me. As if to say, you know, look, we all have the same intentions. So, and I do kind of think that she's, I don't know the right word, um, no matter what I say, I'm going to be misread by saying this, but I think she has the right intentions. Okay? I think most people in Shadow Hills feel the same way as the rest of Wycomico County. I think they've been, I think they've been, what's the right word I'm looking for? They're upset with certain groups that are driving dirt bikes, the ATVs, the people that are trespassing. Think this had anything to do with the Jeeps, thinking it had anything to do with Julie Giordano. But neither here nor there, I feel like, like she was finally at the point, she's at a breaking point. And I'll say this, if I can be the middle man to make this all go right, shoot me an email, shoot me a message. We'll sit down, we'll have dinner and we'll go from there. I will say it, I'll say it to everybody, doesn't matter what it's for, I'll help anybody. I sent out three emails today saying, if you need help with something, reach out to me, I'll do everything I can to help you. But once lies and misinformation start getting thrown around, conversations are done. I have no use for it. And I think that's what a lot of it happened over the last couple of months, leading up to the safari at the quarry. If we're in for the right reasons and we're in to make it, you know, a mutual benefit for everybody. Then I'm, I'm all on board and I'm willing to sit down and hear your side of the story and, you know, go to dinner, whatever. Meet up, there's plenty of places we can meet. Shoot me an email. Message on Facebook, now a couple of years blocked for whatever reason. But we can, we can fix this and work this out like adults and, you know. Unfortunately, you guys, much like the fire department, the sheriff's department, you guys are a part of the political bond. You know, you got dragged into this, so if I can help, reach out to me. And that's all I really got for tonight. You know, it's, uh, it's late, this video is going to be up late. I don't know if I'll get up tonight, I might get up tomorrow. But we're going to do our best. These videos take a long time to make. And that's it. We're going to shut it down, get it edited. Exporting takes forever. Uploading it to Facebook takes another forever. So again, we'll see. Everybody have a great night. I'll be back tomorrow.